I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to Goldendale City Council for July 17, 2023. Don't forget this is our rule call.
Here. Steve Johnson.
Here.
Dave Jones.
Here.
Ellie Casey.
Here.
Andy Hall.
Here.
Bill Bertoa Pharaohs.
Here.
And Myla Wong.
Here.
Mayor Missy and Laura Meeker.
And Lauren has contacted us and has an event family business today, so we need a motion to excuse him.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Meeker from attending the Goldendale City Council meeting for July 17, 2023. All of you.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any one here for public comment regarding items that are on the agenda? Any on the call in or on the Zoom? I don't believe so. We'll go on further down the agenda. We do not have a public hearing this evening. We have the agenda and we need a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. And if anybody has questions beforehand, please let us know so we can entertain those. If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for the Goldendale City Council meeting and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is a presentation by the Chamber of Commerce and is reviewing our Community Days and events. And your Jackson, I think, is on hand for that. She's Executive Secretary of the Chamber. Welcome, everybody.
So this was Community Days. We had a couple different things go on. We started off on Friday with a chalk art contest on Court Street and the kickoff of the Native American Exhibition. And then also the first two-part series of a Main Street concert on the 100 block of West Main. We also, we opened the day on Saturday. The Motorsports Association had their show and shine on the West Block. And then on the East Block, we had vendors and out of the courthouse lawn, we had bouncers and more kind of track activities. Couple of food vendors and another Native American exhibition piece where they did different various performances and things. And they had information booths you could visit and things like that. We worked to partner with the Klickat County Historical Society to feature their press museum quilt show. And worked with the, I get the name wrong, the Scavenger Hunt.
Society.
Society. Okay. I was like, I'm sorry, I forgot that word. It's the summer, the brings a little bit of sunfray. So Scavenger Hunt Society helped us to have another scavenger hunt throughout the community. The Leaf 79 was around the time, around the numbers of folks that participated. And so those folks all got a grab bag. And so I wanted to just reach out or, sorry. We had the youth talent show and then the second Main Street concert. And so then some of our partners, I just wanted to highlight as a special thank you. First of all, city of Goldendale, thank you guys for helping make that possible. We also used some of the resources and funding from the Klickat County funds that we received. We had a donation from Cypress Creek Renewables that helped contribute to that event and bring in some of those kids amenities and things. We had Holcombe Century Market that donated all of the goodies for the grab bags. The Golden Oak Community Library hosted the scavenger hunt pickup and drop off. Bishop Sanitation helped us with a lot of different logistics. They helped emcee the parade. And they helped set up the different porta potties and things and then hand washing stations and things like that. We were really honored to work with the Golden Oak Motorsports Association in celebrating their 25th anniversary. It was a beautiful car show. And then again, the Klickat County Historical Society with their quilt show. We did publish a map and then distribute that throughout the parade route and from our info booth and online, which probably we had at least 200 copies of that that went out and all were passed out. And then we did marketing via regional things. So we did a radio show. We did publications in the Sentinel. We did a lot of social media, which our social media right now, so from the beginning point of the year, we were seeing maybe like 100 people that had seen our posts or a rough draw of around a couple thousand. And now we're hitting 5,000 a post and 10,000 roughly just for people that generally can see and view our information. So we're really kind of creating a reach with our materials. We featured videos of the street concert and the Native American Exhibition and the parade. And so we really did kind of enjoy partnering with the different folks to make this event happen. And so it was pretty exciting. We did come in right at budget and made about, it was like about $500 over basically costs and expenses and things. We're still waiting for the final, all the dust, all the financial dust to settle. And then our committee actually just met today and they're looking at next year's event, which if you haven't happened to have checked the 2024 calendar, the first Saturday after the Fourth of July, which is traditionally the day of Community Days happens, happens to be July 6, which Fourth of July is on Thursday. So we are in preliminary ideas as far as whether or not it would be an asset to the community to combine with and partner with the abate efforts of the Derby and the fireworks and make Community Days then a multi-day event or to separate the two out a little bit farther. So there's, I would like to kind of open the time up for questions or comments on behalf of the council, input that you'd like to see as far as planning for next year and things like that.
I would just like to say that it was a really good event. I saw a lot of people actually enjoy some of the festivities and it was a busy calendar that Saturday, so job well done.
Any comments on the dates for next year's Community Days? Because it's unique to have the Fourth and Community Day so close. We could take advantage of it. I don't want to say you should, but I think it would be a good way to go.
We have them passed.
Multi-day event, that's all. We hear two things about Community Days. Bring back the carnival, which I've already been rejected for 2024 on the first couple of tries because I'm already working on it. And multi-day event, because Community Days implies more than one.
But you would still do Community Days the weekend after the Fourth of July?
So the thing is, if you look at the calendar, the Fourth of July is Thursday. And so if you do it the weekend after, it's basically Fourth of July weekend.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of the question. We're looking at the needs and strengths of the community. Some of the community pillars and volunteers and things, it's like, is it too much to ask our community to do a multi-day event all in that forum or should it go to the next weekend, which would be the 13th? And then just kind of looking at precedence for the next few years. If you look at 2025, July 4th is on a Friday, so first Saturday after Fourth of July is the 5th. And then it isn't until, basically we kind of have that leap year bump that the Fourth of July is a Saturday in 2026 and bumps it then to that following weekend. It starts that distance and then it starts to get closer again. So it's kind of, you know, looking at planning and strategic planning for the event. How best can we grow the event? How best does it match the needs and wants of our community?
I would say, I would say that a lot of people travel toward the Fourth and where it's kind of like Thanksgiving and then the day after when everybody does their shopping and everything. Is it too close to make it two separate events? Or would it be more to when people travel and travel back home to be the same weekend we made it all together?
Then you've got the, if you have two different weekends, then it's almost like traveling two weekends versus one weekend.
We're having to decide, do we travel this weekend or this weekend?
There's also the hotel motel aspect of things, because if we have it on separate weekends, that generates two weekends worth and disperses out the people across two weekends and generates more money than just compacting it and hitting limits and exceeding limits and not necessarily being able to serve those directly in our community that might bump them up to other places where they'd have to stay. Because class reunions typically happen with Community Days and that's one of our actual major tourism draws is that you have these huge class reunions coming in from people who have exited Goldendale. And so looking at just different things, it's like, what are some options? So we're just, we just discuss different things, very, very preliminary. And we'd like to kind of involve the council as we start to do that. The Chamber is working on a strategic planning session they'll have in September to set up their planning and programming for 2024. And so it's still kind of in decision mode or like undecided, just kind of looking at options and just trying to look ahead to the years coming and see what we want to do. Because if we do it that way and we're building like on a year-to-year basis, it makes for a stronger programming across all.
What do we put on the agenda for the next session or the one after that? See, I have time to really look at it. Cost of gas is the first St. Heinz lot of, if you're outside of Golden, they don't.
That, and maybe you can give us a copy of what you have already drummed up here, like this forward look on the dates.
Yeah, we can forecast the dates out and just look at them, because basically for the next three years, that first Saturday is very close to the Fourth of July. So it's like, do we then just break tradition even the second Saturday? Do we keep it there? Hard, hard to mess with 30-year traditions.
Right. And it's obvious, it's obvious that the Derby, the crash Derby was a huge success to more people than they had room for. So I think consideration for that to stand alone, I know they combined it with the Fourth of July, so we can do the fireworks and all that, but possibly it's not necessary that they do the fireworks.
I've heard a lot of cool things about drug shows, those fire problems.
Not bad. Well, it's not really, it is an issue, to say the least, for what it now play. But because it was such a success, I can see the need to try to maybe spread it out on a couple of different weekends. And it sounds like both events are flexible in timing or pick a date.
It would definitely help for 2025 with the hotel revenues increasing to 24. If it's two separate events, then 25 has more.
At least two different weekends. It's all right.
Good point.
There's a lot of options that we have.
Put on the agenda.
Yeah. Well, it's a great dilemma to have.
Yes, absolutely.
I would say we're not planning the event, so it might want to have some more say into that.
Maybe what we can go ahead and do is since we do have that kind of core planning session in September, maybe we can come back to visit with you in October. If you do have, because I believe you have an events committee with this, so maybe the events committee can kind of meet in between now and then and kind of, kind of say, what would you like to see coming out of Community Days? Because that's another thing is what kind of programming do you want to see come from it? So it's like, if we have a little bit of a guidebook of what are your favorite things that you want to see return? What things maybe, eh, not so much, kind of a general, I don't know, just a menu of selection options or different things? That we can kind of then start to build off the program off of that too. Because we know some of the traditional things. We learned a lot this year. There will be a couple of adjustments that will make, if the programming stays pretty much the same, we would adjust a few things for next year, so.
Mindy, I got an impression that the numbers are up on every event, pretty much. It seemed like there were a good bit more people in town, both local residents participating, which hasn't always been the case, as well as the people that come specifically for Community Days and Fourth of July.
I'm a firm believer in community partnerships. And the more people that you engage in a healthy manner, the more people are interested in either participating or like if you have a committee and that committee has cousins, aunts and uncles and brothers and then you have those people that get involved, it creates a bigger ring of community that gets to participate and actually have ownership and fun with it. And so I think that that's what we're really trying to kind of like infuse our events with. And that I think is possibly what's helping that. We are working very hard to make sure we maintain well-in advance programming and marketing across a lot of different layers. We're using our social media to the maximum amount we can. We're using local radio. We're using regional radio. We're using newspaper press releases and articles and starting to kind of like really make sure we're layering all the communications. Because, you know, oftentimes people, especially in Goldendale, they're like, I didn't hear about it. And it's because, you know, if you only put an ad in the paper just right before an event, like even two weeks or three weeks or four weeks before an event and you only do a couple of radio show ads, those things alone don't get that word of mouth, because really what you look at when you're doing marketing and media is you're really trying to generate word of mouth. And so I think that, you know, having some anchor features that can kind of like get people talking about really helps that communication in our area. So we hope to continue to see an increase, because it's just great when people come out for, a lot of work goes into these events and it's just nice to see the response.
Did you see anything in either things that you need as a chamber? Either more support or assistance on something or things that we need to change because it's not working right? But the Chamber's done a fabulous job. We want to make sure it's easier than ever.
I want to give a shout out to the Golden Oak Police Department. They were there during kind of our evening Main Street concert. We had an unexpected fireworks show and a couple of other little things and they were right on there. They responded quickly and dealt with a lot of the, you know, kind of a couple minor issues that we did have throughout the course of the event. People that decided to park in places they shouldn't park, things like that. And just, you know, thank you for all of that help, because, you know, I think that partnership between the city and the Chamber is really critical to help these things go smoothly. So shout out to them. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Glad it happened. I thought it was very well done, both on your side and the city's side.
And I will have to kind of give a lot of that credit, especially for Community Days, to my cohort, Taya. She's not able to be here tonight, but she was very much a pivotal person for this year's event. So that's also, if you happen to see her, she's really the one that kind of is the heart and soul of Community Days this year.
Oh, good.
Well, it was noticeable how much work was put into it, so we really appreciate it. It's nice to have, you know, people at the Chamber that care so much about Community Days. Community is my favorite.
There's a lot of really great people at the Chamber right now, you know, having been here in two different seasons and seeing, you know, that passion and interest. And it's, you know, business owners and community organization heads that want to see great things for our community. And it just, it's a great synergy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the department, of course, I'd like to begin, the Goldendale Fire Department. And the many fires that you guys are heroes for being a part of.
Yeah, we've had a busy couple of weeks. We've been logged mutually, wildland fires, as well as a few from the city and medical calls. And had a couple, been out on wildland fires, caught pigeons in the city, so we're bouncing back and forth and covering them all, but staying on half of them.
That's good, because when there's blowing tugs Goldendale and almost every one of those fires, and that's not what you want at all.
Yeah, we've been amazed by the response. We had a great response from all departments, so.
Yeah, it was a great show. It was a really good, good effort all the way through. And Rural 7 as well stepped right up. It's important for us to have that much protection against things as dangerous as wildfire.
The response, you can't say enough about the response.
Oh, yeah.
The fire that was just north of town here. I mean, that could have gotten really ugly. I mean, it's a miracle they got it stopped when they did. And everybody was on deck.
Yeah.
Yeah, on that one. Everybody was on deck.
I'm always amazed to see all the different departments and it's like everybody's just one, all work together.
It's a team.
People from all over the county and PNR and everybody just out there doing their thing, so.
Anything else in your report?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. For the Goldendale Fire Department, Chief Mike Smith.
Police Department, Fire Department, I don't know what's your answer. On that note, I would like to thank Fire Department and the city for allowing the Fire Department to have that mutual agreement. I know I was evacuated from my houses last weekend. They said a real fire. It was very more close than I've ever had a fire to my house since I've been here 30 years. So it's firsthand knowledge to see, you know, Golden Hill tribes go by, I mean, planes, big planes, small planes. I mean, from a fire up there to there, everybody worked together and it was really appreciated. You know, you don't quite understand until you're watching the smoke come over your field and, you know, they're telling you you have to leave and so, so just thank you for that. And the council for allowing the Fire Department, I know it's a budget, it costs money to do these things. You know, with the Community Days, I mean, my overtime budget's probably going to be shot this year. But, you know, to have the guys come out and to show the presence that there was twice as many people I've ever seen at Community Days. So it was, it was a lot more busier than ever. We had our booth up. I did like the way that they had the tents in the middle of the street. When I had one incident during the day with a vehicle that was parked, abandoned, we had to have towed. The problem is there's no tow company in Goldendale. And so that's something that, I don't know if the city, I mean, might want to advertise out there to bring a company in. It would help us out extremely, you know, it was about a four-hour wait to get a tow truck up here from the DOWs. And so it's one of those things that Bishop stopped doing it, Joe Sellers stopped retiring. And so there's just nobody's coming to do that. It's one of those professions, it's just hard to get people, I guess, to do that. But it's definitely a need for the city. We're up to 1,645 calls this year so far, so that's up from usual. When you have a new car, it's out front, so when you get, feel free to go out and look at it. New decals out there.
Can't arrive it?
Yes, you can. Crash it.
In the parking lot.
Just make sure you wash it and wax it before you bring it back. No, we are looking right now into a new possibly ventilation system for testing drugs with a new fentanyl now. Came into a situation this, last week, we actually got a guy delivering, we got almost 200 pills of fentanyl. The problem with that is when you try to test fentanyl, you have to break it to put it through the testing process. We don't have a ventilation system that's safe to do that. So we're working on, working on changing policy to have a minimum of two people there. We are farming that out right now to the WSP crime lab. But it's just something, I mean, put it back in your mind, I'm still, we've got no prices, you know, on what's going to run to do that. Early stages, so just kind of priming the pump with that for definitely a safety issue down the road, so. But other than that, we're doing good. Waiting for, I got a guy coming out of Academy in a couple of weeks, so we're excited for the first new recruit out and hopefully we'll get the next one out next month. And so get back up the staff and we'd be a lot more happier.
Thanks, both of you. Goldendale Public Works.
So we have the union negotiation contract coming up this year. So I'm starting to gather information for that process and, you know, planning on how we're going to proceed through negotiations. We're working, I'm working on the CIP for the water rate study to try to get some more numbers, so that's more accurate. One of the things that wasn't addressed in the previous one is we do know coming up in the next few years that the well pumps are going to have to be pulled and evaluated. So I'm waiting for numbers on that from our consultant, who's been working on it, which is Aspect Consulting. And we'll get those numbers in there as well as we will add the numbers in for the estimated value to replace the main line coming into town. Some, that's out there quite a ways, but it will be in the next, probably sometime in the next 20 years. You guys, we're, the city's going to have to do that, get that going. The other thing, I've been working on drafting an RFP for the park. We got that grant for it, which has to do with archeologic, our archeological review, which will encourage, a SEPA will be required as well, and I've been drafting that up. And then the other element of that is we have to come up with a plan because it's in a floodplain for what's called net zero lossage. So we will mitigate how to, we're, we're pretty sure we're going to find, they already have found some arrowheads down there, so we're pretty sure we're going to find those. And then we will basically fill over the top of that to a certain depth so we can go ahead and put a sprinkler system in there in the future and not disturb the ground beneath it. And then the other element of that is we'll have to go to the shoreline someplace and do some mitigation work for the net zero lossage. Do you guys understand what I'm talking about? For its water displacement? We'll have to dig some area out in there to make that balance out. But that's something we're moving forward on. Actually, we actually have a, next council meeting, I'll be bringing, we'll have two public hearings. One on the Trailer Park Moratorium. And then the other one will be the final hearing on the shoreline management plan. So those will be coming forth and I've been getting those ready. Our street lights, new, that's what's sitting in the hallway in all the boxes, 11 boxes out there. Those are, if you guys want, after the meeting, I'll show you what they are. They're just a plug and play issue. You pop the other one out, put this new one in and that'll, then they'll know. They'll, you know, everything, they can communicate through and through cellular, is how it communicates. So they will monitor the system for us. They're pretty high-tech. If some device or a light bulb or some other little issue starts going wrong with a particular light, they will see it coming before it happens. They'll know a couple of weeks out if a light's going out or going to go out. And basically, I think it's based on the amperages pulling. And then they will contact us and say, do you want us to order you another light? They'll, they'll, and then we'll respond, okay, yes, and then they'll send us a new light out for it. On the airport, basically, we're still waiting for the electrician to get completed with his work. And then after that, I've been working with Rick Lund Dean and our consultant as well about how we're going to deal with fuel system. And Myla and I were having to talk about this earlier today. We think it's better to start with a half a tank of fuel to just see how much it's getting sold, because if we fill it up and they don't use it all, we can only store that for six months and then it has to go away. So we want to see how much fuel is actually being used. And the other thing is we'll have to go through some staff training on, I believe it has to be checked daily. We have to go out there and check for water daily and then make sure we dump the separator that separates the water from the fuel and redo that on a daily basis.
What would you comment? That's a 6,000 gallon tank. And recently, Richard Lund Dean explained to me that maybe they put 3,000 gallons in and then you wait a couple of weeks and then you put their next 3,000 in. But like Pat said, it's only, I have it there for six months. So can we sell 6,000 gallons of fuel in six months? I don't know. That's going to be.
We won't know till it happens.
Yeah, I, kind of what Pat mentioned to me, I would like to try out at least half. And that was, that would be my recommendation. Because it's going to take a while for the pilots or whoever to know that there is fuel available.
Exactly.
And so anyway, so that's what I.
Good. Excellent. Sensible approach.
Question?
Yes, question.
Regarding the park development and the water system you were talking about, we've talked about it before. There is an existing underground system down there. Why can't we look into feasibility of seeing if that is still usable? Because the ground's already been used for that.
Yeah, we probably can. It just depends on what they're, we have to do an archeological review. And those are details we can address with them through the archeological review process. And we'll base that on the, their feedback. But I know last time when Carl tried to do something down there with just the parking lot, he got a lot of pushback on the SEPA from the tribes. They, they weren't being very cooperative at that time. And then they just, I don't know what happened, but the city just kind of gave up at that point. What we're going to try to do, a little bit different approach when we do the SEPA this time, is to put those, we're, we'll look at all scenarios, but we'll put mitigation measures in there. And basically, why we're doing that, we will try to outreach to particularly the tribes and say, hey, what's your recommendation here? What's your recommendation here? And to try to prevent the back and forth of what we can and can't do. And then, you know, no matter what, we're still going to move forward with the SEPA, whether if that's negative feedback or positive feedback. But I, I think it'll be, you know, I always found working with them, the tribes is, if you reach out to them, ask them for their help, they're more than willing to. And that's what I think the way we need to approach it.
One other, another item, we talked about this before too. And that is all the bug kill, dead trees on Observatory Hill. Talking about assets of like Community Days and all this. Observatory Hill is the biggest single asset Golden Dale has. It really is. And that bug kill is just getting worse and worse and worse up there. And it is perfect for fire. And it's going to keep getting worse. Those pine trees are dying more every year, not just here, everywhere. It's because it will let them spread more, is what it is. No, it's almost out of control, and in time, there won't be any pine trees left on Observatory Hill.
Steve, I was, I was going to say that Lauren was going to look into that.
I thought it was.
Yeah, he said that you can apply for a grant or apply for whatever. I don't know if this can be done next year, hopefully it could be sooner than yet. Yeah, definitely sooner than.
I would think, since the state owns a multimillion dollar facility at the top of that hill, they might have an interest in helping out.
Well, yeah, we're definitely looking into that, yes.
I think there's some grants available out there, I know they are pretty much, not every year, but I see them pop in and out now and then. But this would be not the time of year I would recommend doing it, with the trees down. But it's something this fall or this winter, so, and take a look at it. But that brought up another thought, as I know we've talked about some of the oak trees down there at the intersection of Mill and, what is it, Broadway? You know what oak trees I'm talking about, off to, yeah, the ones that are blocking the light of sight.
They're in the, they're in the easement.
They're in the easement area, yeah.
They're huge.
One of those trees is dead now, on the far end. So that's something that, you know, we need to discuss in committee, how we're going to approach that.
Well, the one closest to the intersection does affect the light of sight, the first one.
It does, the sidewalk is really buckled through there as well. So that's an issue that we need to resolve one way or the other, whether the trees are removed or not. We need to, it's a severe trip hazard, the way it is.
No, I hate to take down healthy trees, I'm really hesitant for that, but yeah, that needs to be addressed.
That's a pretty big tree, and that's going to be a big job. We're probably going to have to get a tree company in here to remove that.
Right, well, same with, you know, the situation on Observatory Hill. You know, if it was just three, three trees, Public Works might be able to go out there in the following year and take them out. No, it's a logging operation now.
And then, and a cleanup too.
And then, yeah, cut them down.
Are we talking about replant?
That wouldn't be a bad idea, something that's not susceptible to the bug, to the beetle. Because they don't seem to be bothered, fir trees, or, you know, other indigenous type trees.
Well, I have a maple in my yard, I thought looked a little odd, and I've gone around on the other side. I'm amazed it's still alive, so many branches are just, they're not dead. But this, whatever this insect is, it's doing, it likes maple as well, so.
Well, I've noticed a couple other trees.
I'm around everywhere.
In your town too, I've got a couple of them properly laid down here. They're dead.
Yeah.
They're dead. So they'll have to come out. But anyway, yes, let's try to get on top of that sooner than, or at least on Observatory Hill.
Yeah.
State needs to be approached, that's still. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Anything else in the report?
No.
Appreciate all the things that are taking place, I understand all of the chip saving that's already been completed.
Yes, Doug should be back tomorrow, and then I'll get a schedule from him when you feel the city's going to start all the streetlights.
Thank you, Pat. We'll go on now to council business. And one piece of council business we have is the airport bylaws and advisory board document. And Pat Munro, present that for our discussion.
Yeah, this came before you guys several months ago. I don't know if you recall or not, but my recommendation, I mean, we put a recommendation there for tonight, but I know you guys probably would like to have some time to go over this a little bit longer, and read through it, and then provide us comments back if you don't feel that you're able to proceed this evening. He didn't track changes, but it felt, I, from what I can remember, the topics or your previous concerns were, I do believe he addressed the majority of those. And they did provide a recommendation for initial airport advisory members. They are considered a four-year term, and members are usually appointed to these committees by the recommendation of the mayor, and then confirmed by city council. So that's up to you, if you guys want to do this. I do agree with a comment that was made to me earlier this evening, that it would probably be wise if there was a council member, or two on the committee as well.
Absolutely.
And then there's the Golden Dale purpose and their board goals that were put together by the same group.
Well, right there in the, well, section two, it states the airport, the Golden Dale Airport Commissioner, who at the time of establishing the committee, will be.
City Council.
determine who that is, will be a council member, appointed by the council.
Well, the one question I have is, I think you think I got a hit list here, but I was wondering if Bill would do Zoom, because you have to have a quorum. And this list here, these gentlemen, they're very busy. And many times, they can't make the meeting, so I just wanted to build a Zoom call in.
Well, right off the get-go, we can eliminate a thing too.
Yeah.
There's nine of them there, and what else does it say? Shall not exceed seven members.
Oh, sure.
That's in section two also.
Okay.
On that particular aspect, because I've, I worked with the advisory board for the Dallas Airport as well. And on that, if you have somebody like Doug Hurley, who, Hurley heat, that is incredibly busy, but it's an international expert in flight safety and things, as well as, probably might flood, but it's not for us to decide, or not for me to decide. But they can be designated as special advisors, and you still have that expertise again in the committee without cutting out someone, it's like cutting off a really good limb on a tree, you don't do that, and so, you could work towards that. And particularly since you also will have a city council member, or two, probably just one, or neither. But even a nine-member committee is not hard as an advisory board to operate. They were, they're all experts in aviation, and that's, that's a big help.
Well, Mylan's already put so much time into work on the airport, he's the no-brainer of us to represent us.
Anything I.
We have, but we've got more work to do yet, so it's a good start for what we're doing out there.
I would agree that the virtual option has to be there, just on the fact that that's what the times are now. And it allows you to bring so many more experts without having to pay travel, or things like that.
It's a start, it's a good start.
And a strong point from Mylan, being the airport minister. I work with him all the time, while I'm searching for different funding. Not only the airport, but everything else the city does at the Olympia and the Seattle areas, or the Washington DC area, the senators. He's got connections and an absolute love for that airport. It's just, that's what my thesis is. Now, Pat suggested that we may want to take this home, study it, think it through, we can have a committee that we can discuss it if necessary, it'd probably be the ordinance committee, Pat, or if we did.
That'd be more of a public works committee thing.
Okay, that's fine, that's good.
Well, I was, I was wondering how this is going to be formed, and it actually goes on to say, shall be appointed by the council.
Yes, that's an important part.
That's the last shake of this folks.
Yes.
So, Pat, just to be clear, the recommendation was to table this item until maybe the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Pass a poll for approval, not for appointment, just for approval?
Just for approval, yeah. I think it needs, you guys need to probably read it very detailed.
And make those changes that.
And make any changes we want at the next meeting. And then we can, you know, adopt it, you guys can adopt it with a motion to amend these settings.
So I will make that motion to table this item until the next council meeting? Then need be a public works committee between now and then.
I have a second.
I'll say.
I'm going to say that to forward this airport bylaw advisory board's document to the Public Works Committee to discuss approaches to the formation of a Golden Dale Municipal Airport Advisory Board, and the membership, and the activities, and the operation of that board. And there was a second part.
Or you're back at the next council meeting?
It'll be covered at the next city council meeting, which is August 7th, I believe. If everything is correct, we'll call for a vote. If I've made mistakes in there, make sure we get it worked out, but all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, good work, good work.
Just one more question?
Yes.
When's the meeting?
It'll have to be next week.
Yeah.
I will be gone a couple of half-days this week, so.
First of all, please.
Yeah. Does Monday work?
Far as I know.
Monday, the 24th?
No, 24th, I'm going to be in Olympia, and so.
Tuesday, are you back, Monday back?
Well, I'll be coming home on Tuesday.
So Wednesday?
I could, I could do Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 26th.
Yeah.
And I'll have to ask more.
Okay, now this is the.
Public Works Committee.
Probably works, okay.
Time?
Whatever time works for you guys, usually it's better for a barn and late after.
Three, four o'clock, four o'clock?
Three or four o'clock, yeah.
Four?
Four is fine with me.
Four o'clock.
Okay.
You didn't speak up soon enough.
I appreciate the efforts city council members put forward in supporting these committees, participating in and remembering that important part to developing these different steps. It's a huge public service, and I think it needs to be recognized. Okay, well, do you report of officers now? If I had to skip something that you wanted to do, otherwise we'll start with Andy for council members' reports.
I'm good.
Al Filberto?
I'm good.
Mylan?
I guess I'm good too.
Well, you guys are doing great.
We got all the other time.
Well, we got it tonight.
We'll take it.
Well, we got it.
You're next.
No, I'm good, I've got the opportunity to say, bring up what I wanted to.
That's super.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Oh, thanks, Mayor, well, you know, I just wanted to talk about how great of a success the 4th of July, the demolition derby, you know, we heard all about it from the chamber, but, you know, lots of people don't realize how much work it really takes to plan those events, and really appreciate the partnerships that the city has with the different groups in town, the Abate Motorcycle Group and the Chamber, just did an amazing job over that. Good to have him here, thank you.
Ally?
I have nothing.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, we'll go to what the mayor has, and I told you I had a project for you. And I've got to make sure I follow it with me. There it is. I appreciated when Chief Smith mentioned fentanyl and the issues and the dangers of it. I don't think we have a clue how really dangerous fentanyl is, if it's even in the place you're at, it's dangerous for you. This is a pamphlet, that I've been contacted by a group called Addictive, it's Addicted. It's a public service type group, but they've developed a parent's guide to fentanyl. It's a simple thing, it's one page, it folds like this. Your project will be to fold them and use them. But I've also talked to them about providing them for the police department, the fire department, and the school, because they're all in contact with youth one time or another. And they, I just think there's a lot of confusion over fentanyl, because it's a medication in certain instances, and it's a deadly drug, and many, many, many others. We had three people in Golden Dale about a month ago that died. They were revived, every one of them, but that's the terminus here, is whenever they go out, and it's extremely difficult for people, and that happens. So is that right? I won't be checking how it's like you. Fold them, but I can't give you a visual aid if you need it. I'll see if Pat and Sandy can let me check their folding as well.
Did you want me to hold yours?
I knew he wouldn't let anybody do that. And the last item, a report of officers, city administrator Pat Munro, and I don't know whether you have more or you have to, I always give a very thorough report in the public works, and we appreciate it. We're open now for public comment, anyone has an item that they'd like to bring up? There's a three-minute time on that. I know we have one, a couple of commissioners that are here for one. If you could come up with a lectern and let us know what you would like to talk about.
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Cory Christensen, this is Rain Christensen. We moved here in 1997 and raised our five kids here in Golden Dale. Last one graduated this last year. So we've been here for a little while, we're getting a little bit older, and I've discovered something new, and it's called pickleball. Pickleball is something that is really popular with people that are not young anymore, because it's a little slower than tennis, and keeps you active, it's really a nice thing to do, especially outside. We don't have any pickleball facilities presently. We have a brand-new beautiful tennis court from the high school, lights, nice surface. I think that's been kind of used with tape for the people that do like to play pickleball, set up a net there. But when I drive past World War II Park, and there are tennis courts that are in pretty bad shape, nice fence all around it, good central area in the city, just, I could just see pickleball right there. I mean, it's pretty darn popular, they're actually taking, in a lot of places, especially hot places, taking malls and converting them into pickleball centers, because it's so popular. So with that, I did contact a company that does resurface, and to get a quote, to see just how much it would be. So I have that information, I thought maybe I'd just see what kind of questions he had, and be, and I'm available to follow up at future meetings, or if you want to talk about it, who's interested, who would be the person, the main person to contact and work with.
So what do you need to have this?
Well, the fences are already there, the surface is already there, the surface needs to be leveled, cleared out, refilled, and then painted. There is, I have, one quote is you can convert the pickleball, or sorry, the tennis courts, which there's two tennis courts. courts, you can convert that to four pickleball courts. You can have the nets permanently in there, so it would be permanently marked for pickleball in particular. The tennis court has eight, two, or it has four courts. And they're used for tennis, beautiful, open to everyone to use. So that little space in World War II Park is just perfect for them. So I think just the work to have that converted and the money associated with that.
What kind of surface, my question would be, could it be like paving? And if so, would it be cost-effective to use our paper?
I think it's paved surface now.
It is. It's paved surface. There's cracks and there's grass growing through it.
Cracks just need...
So is that something that maybe public works could come down with the paper and...
Well, usually tennis courts are, they're, I don't know, lack of a better term. It's like a, it's a special kind of paint that goes on. I think that's what you're kind of...
Eventually, the paint, yes, there's sand, once it's...
But we'll have to, I'll have to go evaluate how bad the cracks are, see if they need cut out or if they can be filled. Because they're gonna want a fairly smooth surface so the ball bounces correctly, just for the surface.
I think there's one thing we might want to talk about a little bit with that, because I happen to see an interesting story in the news about pickleball courts are extremely loud. And you get a lot of pushback from anybody who lives near them because of how much more noise they produce.
Yeah, especially country courts.
So it's something, you know, think about the neighbors that live right around there and suffered from it.
I think that'd be part of the process, to change the use of that part of the park to...
What about, what about that concrete pad at Econe Park? Do you already have a smooth concrete pad there?
Is that big enough?
I think I don't know which one that is. Where the skate park used to be, the Econe Park? Oh, yes.
It used to be a basketball court.
It would need, it would need a fence.
Yeah.
So there'd be additional cost in the fence. Primarily, this is just surfacing and some special paint.
I mean, that concrete pad is smooth at least. You could do both.
So it's very popular. I think it might bring people right to the middle of the city, to World War II Park. The basketball court is being used. It probably could use resurfacing as well. So it also has cracks and grass growing. I don't know if we have any other public basketball courts in the area outside. But that one's been used pretty well.
How, how, how big is one court?
They're, they're small. You can take four, or two tennis courts as stands, the one in World War II Park, for example, and put four pickleball courts in there. You would want to have some kind of a barrier, because they would be one on either side of the tennis court, here. So in order to play, you'd be hitting the ball into the other person's game. So you might want to leave the tennis nets up between the two. And then you can install the others. You can put in permanent nets. You can just paint the area, and people can bring their, what am I, temporary nets from home. You can bring those and put them up. But I think the main thing is a good surface. And, you know, just cleaning up, cleaning up what we have already. It's a resource that we...
It's a savings in some way.
Mayor, I would say that what, what we really need to do is bring back the parks committee.
Yeah.
Because there's the pickleball, basketball court needed, splash pad that we discussed. There's a couple other things that just needs to be wrapped up, done, and moved forward.
Well, because we're close to having that, that plan worked out, so we can start using that to apply for...
Isn't that, since we have that plan done, we can start applying grants.
Yeah. So if we can move forward on that, then we can move forward on everything else.
What's the dimensions of the court?
Twenty by forty-four.
No, there's somebody...
I just picked it up.
Easily pickleball, or...
No.
She has a trophy.
She doesn't smell anything.
This is what it looks like. And this is kind of the dimensions in comparison to a tennis court. These are pickleball courts.
Thank you.
Is there anything that you'd like more from me? Is there quotes?
Like digital copies of those?
Yes, absolutely. What is, just the pictures?
Yeah.
Or whatever you have. I do. I have a, I have a quote here. I have...
It's like ping pong.
It's like ping pong being really small, like a little person on the ping pong table.
It's between ping pong and tennis.
So is there anything, would you like me to come to future meetings? Or is there something that I should, someone I should be in contact with, or is it just something?
I think once we get the parks committee going again, and having the input.
The expert.
Okay. Well, I'll leave you the quote then and the pictures. And I'm aware if you have any questions. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? Yes, Rick?
I don't know if I was supposed to be here earlier. I checked the website. It said seven, it said seven o'clock, so. Website gives us a lot of information.
Other websites will say seven o'clock.
It does.
They've already got that. They're gonna bring it back next time if we go through it.
So we're not gonna do this?
We already went through it.
Oh.
Yeah. Well, yeah, they're just gonna study it a little bit more and then come back next time.
Okay. If you have anything you need to know, let me know. I'd be happy to give you links to any number of things.
Thanks, Richard, very much. Anyone else here for public comment, or anybody on the phone or on the telephone that have a comment they want to make or do more? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and request a motion to adjourn in city council.
Second?
So fast. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.